Okay, let's get started. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order, because I've got to go before we pledge. We have a couple of things on the agenda, but before we get to that, we have the approval of the minutes. Everybody should have received email copies of that. Comments?
Will be approved?
Thank you.
My second, Terry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Terry. Under old business, we have a public hearing, and this is in regard to the Christopher Community proposed development at 104 Smokey Hollow Road, also known as La Madre Landing. We have had several meetings with the folks from Christopher Community describing this project, and they presented the latest updated plans. At our last one, I think we have, there's a slightly expanded version that everybody received as part of their packet. And, you know, Jamie, we never done a public hearing here, so normally I would state the rules and any time limit and make sure, anyone who has a comment, please step forward to the microphone. Please provide your name and address from the record. If you signed in, that's also helpful for our board secretary, Mary. And we do have members of Christopher Community here, but it's, the public hearing is not intended to be a give and take, per se. If you have thoughts and comments, please express them, and try to limit your comments to a reasonable amount of time. That doesn't mean that multiple people can't say the same thing, or multiple people living in the same dwelling can't say the same thing, or you all have your own time. So with that, open this public hearing and...
First thing, we wanted to ask the secretary if she did the publication of the public hearing?
I did, and it was in the messenger for the September 14 date of circulation, so it was put in the paper. And I do have a copy of it here.
So we would want a motion to waive the reading of the public notice to start?
If we want to do that, we...
Or it can be read?
Yeah, let's read it, just so we're all on the same page.
Okay. Publication in Baldensville Messenger on September 14, 2022. Please take notice that the Planning Board of Village of Baldensville will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, at 7:15 PM local time, at Village Hall at 16 West Genesee Street, Baldensville, New York. Relative to an application for proposed multifamily housing in the Planning Development District, PPD, located at 104 Smokey Hollow Road, consisting of a 29,600 square foot, two-story assisted living apartment building with 52 units. The first floor is occupied with 16 one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. The second floor is occupied by 19 one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units. Secondary use includes parking, lap patio, and recreational space. Plans are on file at the Village Codes Office in the Village of Baldensville and are available for public inspection during the normal business hours. All parties will be heard at both time and place.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
And as Secretary mentioned, the plans and various paperwork that we look at as members of the planning board are also publicly available. So with that, I call the public hearing open at 7:09 PM. And anyone wishing to speak, please step forward.
My name is Rich Bernhardman at 10 Edgewood Drive. I want to appreciate, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I am not a public speaker, so if I stumble or get confused, I apologize. I know is, the board had mentioned it, and Christopher Communities had mentioned it, that the desire to maintain as much of that hedgerow on the north side of the property be maintained. With all the proposals that they have brought forward, none of that hedgerow will be maintained. So there will be no barrier, natural barrier existing between the property, the properties. There are, however, some plantings, bushes and trees on the north side of the hedgerow, clear of the hedgerow. For instance, there's a couple of flowering crab apples, there's a couple of lilacs, forsythia, and a 50-foot red maple that I would hope would maintain after the clearance of the hedgerow. That would not only go to landscaping for them, but also privacy for the property owners. That going to the fencing, I think it was proposed that there'd be a six-foot fence. I know it's not a question and answer, so I got to adjust a little bit on the fly. I don't know why it wouldn't be an eight-foot fence rather than a six-foot fence. It is elevated over the property owners on Edgewood Drive by 10 feet naturally, and then a two-foot, or a two-story elevation on top of that. You're really looking at a three-story building. A six-foot fence really isn't going to do a whole lot, in my opinion, but I'm not you. Another question I have is, when would that fence be erected? Because once they clear cut that hedgerow, it is wide open. I have privacy issues, security issues. When would that fence be erected would be one thing, and I don't see it there exactly, but where would that fence be erected? I think zoning says one foot inside of the property line, but I'm not sure of that. Are they asking for that fence to be one foot inside the property line, or is it going to vary from that? Again, sorry, didn't mean to ask questions back and forth. I know this is the proposal on the table. There was a proposal earlier about the parking lot being a 30-foot setback between the property owners on Edgewood Drive and the building. Me personally, directly affected by this, I would appreciate that building be as far away from my residence as possible. So I'm in more favor of the parking lot with a 30-foot setback between my residence and the apartment building. Again, sorry for this, it's not a back and forth. Don't know what the start time would be if it were approved. Is this a 2022 fall start, or is this a 2023 spring start for the land clearing and possible construction? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to...
Hi, Don Friedel, 23, Overbrook Lane. I guess technically on the east side by that, what did I see, a delicate wetlands or something? My only question is, can anything be done about the drainage? Because it's like, especially early spring, nonstop mosquitoes, so anything we could do to clear that would make everybody's life in the neighborhood better. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to address?
How you doing? I'm Kelly Coomey. I live at 8 Edgewood Drive, where that huge 50-foot tree that I think Rich was talking about is in my backyard. I did read the notes from the last meeting. I think the proposal was to make sure that the drainage runs out on a Smokey Hollow, because obviously that's a concern of mine too, because we already have a really bad drainage problem into our basement, and it floods every year. So any other spillage would just create a hot mess. And secondly, that tree, like, where are you going to put the fence? Because if that tree gets compromised, that's taking out our house. There's no way around that. I agree, you know, with what Rich said, a higher fence would be good, because we don't need people sitting out on their porch looking into our bedrooms and living rooms and everything. If you could keep the greenage that's there, that'd be great. I think that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your address again?
8 Edgewood.
8, I thought.
Yep. I think we're the fourth on the lot.
Anyone else?
My name's Virginia Dieterly. I own 14 Edgewood. And I know to the left of my house, there's a utility right-of-way that was established back when they built the apartments, St. Mary's Apartments. I want to know if that's going to be utilized. And if it is, are they going to be doing it underground or putting up poles? That's it.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else? Did we have any written submissions?
No, we did not.
Okay. With that, I'll call the public hearing to a close at 7:16 PM. Is there anything from folks from Christopher Communities that you wanted to address and weigh in on? Anything different in the packets we have that we should draw our attention to?
I don't, I mean, everything is in the packets. If you'd like me to go over some of the changes from the last packet, I can do that, such as moving the dumpsters and things like that, if you'd like.
Sure. I'd also be curious, the right-of-way question was, that's one thing I haven't heard before.
The utility easement?
Yeah, the utility, yeah. I didn't see that on a map, not that I would have recognized.
The utility easements, it's between two of the parcels.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, but there's nothing in the plans that show that being utilized for this project. Right, and we'd have to see if that's a, you know, an existing drainage easement or some other access.
But there's no plan to use that.
We don't propose any change or any use of that easement. All the utilities are pretty much along, it's me alone. There will be some easements maybe to be granted to St. Mary's Apartments, because it'll come across their driveway and things like that, but nothing that would affect the neighbors to them.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to just give us some of the highlights, and also just to reiterate, I know that we had several conversations about the existing trees, and obviously that's a concern, and I know that you did have specific plans for preserving certain, not just some of the brush, but some of the other stuff, so if you could speak to that as well, I think that'd be useful.
Yeah, so, hi, my name's Johnson Malloy, with Tassero Associates, project engineer, here with Adrighi Paralaji, who's with Christopher Communities. As far as the tree removal and preserving trees, we only plan on removing as many trees as necessary for the construction of the building and preserving as much as we can. Now, obviously, some of the trees are going to have to be removed, but part of the reason we went with the layout that we did is to be able to get that 50-foot buffer from the property line. Even in the last iteration, we even had the dumpster was a little bit closer, we pushed that back, scooted the parking over, to try and preserve as much of that natural barrier as we can. There is a section, trying to go to the landscaping plan, there is a section where there aren't very many trees, and the area back, you know, to the north along the property line has been cleared. And we are proposing putting in additional landscaping in there to fill that in. The recommendation was made last month that we look at putting a berm or something in there to actually raise that landscaping up, give it a little more height, a little more barrier. So we've gone in and put in a berm, added some shape to it, so it doesn't look like a just little man-made berm. So that should bring the plantings up a little higher. If you look at the types of plantings, the oaks and some of the evergreens and whatnot, they will grow fairly tall. We recognize that a fence by itself doesn't shade everything between two-story buildings. Although, I would like to point out that, you know, this is only a two-story building, so it's not much different than having a house built back there as far as height goes. But we have, like I said, we're proposing all of these plantings to fill in some of the thinner areas. The intention is to preserve as much of the trees and stuff that are there as we can. Also, just to address, you know, kind of this layout, some of the concerns that were expressed before were lights and promotion and stuff of having the parking lot with only a 30-foot bumper, our buffer. This will be pretty much the backside of the building, so there shouldn't be much activity back there. The parking lot's now on the south side of the building, so any lights, you know, headlights from cars, any noise and stuff from people driving or snowplows or whatever, you'll have, in addition to the tree buffer, you'll have the building in between, you know, for the most part. There's an additional fence where the parking lot's at on the east end, there's an additional fence there to just give yet another buffer for sound and light and things like that. So we have tried to address those concerns to the extent that we can. Would you like me to cover some of the drainage stuff?
Sure, yeah, I was just going to ask you.
So originally, we were trying to take, we were trying to avoid the wetlands that are to the, to the west there, down off the hill. Trying to take everything out to Smokey Hollow, and there's a swell there. We've done infiltration tests on the site. You've got great soils, sandy, gravelly soils that a lot of water will soak into. It absorbs a lot. In fact, when we did the infiltration test, couldn't keep the water in the hole, it just went everywhere and quick. So we put in some infiltration bio-retention areas, and originally, we were trying to take it all out of Smokey Hollow. In conversations with the town engineer and just how best to make that work, we did alter the design a little bit. We put a bio-retention down here on the south end, which has an overflow that comes down, down the hill down here. We kept it to this south side, down here in this corner, to keep it as far away from anyone's residence as we can. In theory, you shouldn't see really any water coming out of that, unless it's a major storm, in which case, you know, 100-year storm, you're going to have water going everywhere. But even at that, this is sized for 100-year storm, this is more of an emergency thing. It really shouldn't see much water coming out of it. Goes down through a scum diffuser to return it just to sheet flow, the natural flow into that form, away from the residents. There's still, the other bio-retentions, the same deal, they shouldn't overflow unless you're getting like a 100-year storm, and if they do, they should go out into that swell that's the existing swell along Smokey Hollow Road. So any other questions about the drainage or...
I've got one. When you're going to build the berm, are we assured that the drainage will not back onto the properties, the residential properties there, that will drain away from them and not onto those properties?
So that berm will actually hold some of the drainage back, because naturally, that side slopes generally towards those properties. So by putting the berm there, it actually slows the flow and gives a more opportunity to infiltrate into the ground. So it should make the, or lessen the problem if there is one, if they currently have one. And then, the roof drains from the building go the other way. So that's why I say, between the berm and having this bio-retention on the south side, if there is a problem with drainage going onto properties in the north, we should see
Great. One other question I think that came up this evening was the timeline, and I know some of that is deterministic by action here, but...
Sure, so, yeah, start time, so, start time for construction would not occur until, at the earliest, summer or fall of 2023, so that would be, you know, next, next year.
A year from now?
Yeah, about a year from now, right, September.
I didn't really want to say that it's no longer summer, but...
Oh, and along that note too, there was a question about timing of fences and stuff. I mean, if that's, if that's a concern, the fence could be moved up in the construction process, I mean, while they're doing the berm, you wouldn't want the fence there just because you'd probably damage it, but it, since it's north of the building itself, I believe that that's something we could probably move up in the, in the timeline of, you know, sequence of construction.
Being a PDD, that could be a taller fence. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to stay with the six-foot height.
What's the restriction on maximum height for that? Or is there one?
I don't think in the PDD there is a restriction.
Correct.
From practical points of view, eight-foot is pretty, pretty tall fence. It becomes...
Almost impossible beyond wind damage.
Yeah, from land and that sort of thing.
Much better past that anyway.
Become more like a sound barrier on a highway then.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your input, and appreciate the public input as well. The next item on our agenda is the Philip Street project. And just by way of some background...
Well, are we, are we going to, what's, what's been the next thing that you want to do on this project, right?
On this project?
We provided a review letter, we had a conversation with the engineers earlier today. They're all minor comments that are left, minor things that need to be adjusted, honestly, things that, you know, the board would never even know. We're asking for some clarifications and that sort of thing, with minor stuff.
Well, everything I've seen so far in the plan and Christopher Communities, who have listened, I think intently, to neighbors of the potential project, and the fact that, you know, they are experienced in this kind of development is clear in their presentation and in their plans and the various paperwork that we've had to go through. My feeling, and I know that some other members of the board have expressed this as well, that the intended use is appropriate for this particular parcel, particularly in its proximity to the St. Mary's Apartments. It also, you know, is subject to additional input from planning as we go through this process. But I would invite any other comments or discussion?
My only two comments are just with respect to, I appreciate the input from the residents and also the developer, but based on that, my recommendations would be to, with Greg's input about the option of the height of the fence, to consider adjusting the height from six to eight feet.
Right, it's allowed to be up to 10 feet, so, but I think eight foot, you know, is more appropriate.
It sounds, I think anything higher than eight foot sounds not ideal, but if we could adjust the height to eight foot, and then also in terms of accelerating the timing of the fence once post the, the timing of the, that initial phase of landscaping or the berm or whatever, I fail to remember the description of that, you know, but if we could accelerate the timing, I'm just concerned about the, trying to adhere to the developer, but also protecting as much as we can for the residents' privacy, security concerns, and just any of that, if that's an option to do that.
So...
Go ahead, Jamie.
What we can do is go through the seeker, and then after we go through that, then you can determine if, that you want any unapproval, a disapproval, we need something else, or if you can make the minor modifications to this plan. An approval could be subject to final engineering review on the minor items. So I can lead you through the seeker, if you'd like. So I don't think that on this board, many members on this board have done the seeker, so it's the environmental review document from the state of New York, where it's determined whether there's any significant environmental impacts from the project. So I'm going to read a series of questions that are going to be answered, small or no impact or large impact. So my computer ran out of juice, but I have this pulled up here, so I promise I'm not texting, I am reading this. So here's the questions. First question, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And our zoning does allow for this PDD, so it does not appear in conflict. That's my advice, but that's not the answer, that's for you to discuss. So no or small impact or moderate to large.
Yeah, I don't see anything in the proposal that doesn't adhere with the PDD and the intended use.
Will the proposed action change in result? Oh, yes, so, are we okay? So no or small impact, does the board agree on that? Any comments? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of, of land? And the answer is no or small impact or moderate to large impact.
What's going from undeveloped to developed, is that, is the answer that?
So it can be considered a moderate to large impact, but the, the next question is, is the impact mitigated?
Yeah.
By the plan?
I would say yes, and what we've been talking about with everything from the setbacks to the greenery, fences, berms, drainage...
Lighting.
Lighting.
So we would answer that, while the impact may be moderate to large, it is mitigated by this plan. The next question, will the proposed action impair the character quality of the existing community?
Again, I think that the proposal, being a two-story project, you know, single building, built in character with residential guidelines, basically, that we set forth.
So no or small impact? Anyone else have a comment on that? Okay, next question. Will the proposed action have an impact on critical environmental area? I'll answer that for you, this is not a critical environmental area, so that's, that's no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, hiking, or walkway?
No. I'm not necessarily speaking for the board.
Right, so, yeah, John's giving the answers, if anybody disagrees, say so. If anybody disagrees, say so.
Well, I think that they, and we had several discussions over the summer that the kind of traffic that's there is intermittent at best. There is not a steady, steady stream of traffic even from residents. It's from staff. And it would likely be in a similar level as St. Mary's Park Apartments, which is minimal.
Anyone disagree? Number six. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
We haven't studied the actual power sources and lighting and things like that. But I think generally in the planning process, we would, you know, strongly encourage the use of LEDs and efficiency.
I mean, just to answer something, I mean, already the village has adopted the New York State Stretch Energy Code, which is a little more restrictive than the normal state energy conservation code. So already it's got to meet those deficiency requirements that are more strict than the normal, normal code. So higher insulation, R-values, higher efficiency on lighting, appliances, things like that.
Will the proposed action, so would that be no or, or small impact then on that? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
It'll have an impact, but minimal.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
I'd say no.
Okay, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
There's clearly going to be some impact to the existing flora. I don't know about the fauna. My sense too, from the plan, is that it'll actually improve drainage in and around the property on most of the parcel.
So that would be a no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
No.
We're finding that it's improved. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? So that's the end of the, the questions. So every answer has been small or mo, or small or none. And for the moderate, there was, it has been stated why it would not have a significant environmental impact. So the chair can entertain a motion for a negative SEAKER declaration, saying that this does, project will not have a significantly adverse effect on the environment.
So I have to let everybody know that I have an affiliation with Christopher Community at this point. I did not previously, but currently do. So if you feel I should recuse myself from any voting, I can do that.
I think if you feel comfortable with that, Terry, then that would be a good idea to recuse yourself.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
Do you want me to step down following?
No.
You don't need to. This is going to be hard for you, bud.
Four times.
I said nothing.
I did notice that. I thought that was strange.
Tom, but not the guy.
So move for the motion negative SEAKER.
So the motion of negative.
SEAKER declaration.
Negative, I was going to say negative impact, but it's not a negative impact.
It's a negative SEAKER declaration.
SEAKER declaration. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Terry.
So you can entertain a motion to approve, disapprove, approve with conditions?
I think it was stated earlier, Mark, the, that we take a look at the fence and.
The height and timing.
The height and timing, thank you. I thought there was something else that you, I think it was just the height and timing.
So.
And, you know, I was going to add with the stipulation of, you know, that we are going through the, the process, you know, working with officer, the planning and on various aspects.
And these things, right?
And.
And the remainder of the engineers' questions.
Right. Which I keep burying. The satisfactory answering of, yes.
Of the engineering.
Right.
Comments. So would, the motion would be to approve with the condition that the proposed fence be eight feet high, that the fencing be the first phase of the construction and subject to final engineering comments being addressed and approved.
Yeah, and, and I would just make a small modification to first phase as the first practical phase.
That's different, but yes.
I would, right. And by inserting practical, we mean a reasonable time when the berm construction is done. With that.
So that would be the motion?
That's the motion.
For whoever will make that motion, so discussion, wants to make that motion.
I will. Kevin?
Second.
Chris?
Chris, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Terry, thank you very much.
Thank you. And what's the last date on the, on the plan? So that can go in the minutes as well?
September. Like September 2022.
Just, just September 2022?
Yeah, there's no inaugural day on there.
It's not July or August.
I wrote six, I was like, no, not June.
Right.
Mr. Kevin, I was just also wanted to ask, was it the intent of the board tonight to refer this to the village board for the PDD?
Ah, yes. We will do that.
Yes.
Thank you. So, so that would be a motion to.
You know, I'll make a motion that we refer to the village board.
This adopted plan.
Yeah, this adopted plan for the PDD.
To be placed into the PDD law. Thank you.
This is specific to the PDD zone.
Correct. Thank you, thank you.
I need that second.
Thank you.
So who's, who made that motion?
John.
John, second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terry, thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, you're back in.
Welcome back.
Thank you all. The second item we had, have is discussion of the 19 Phillips Street project. If Jamie's okay.
Yes, now we can.
I go forward. And I sent everybody an email. At our last meeting, we unanimously recommended to the village board modifying the R1 zone of this parcel to PDD with the detail that we believe as an R1, this property will not be developed, practically speaking. And that a PDD rather than an R2 gives the village and this board more, say, in the final planning and development of the project. The village board received that notification and asked that the planning board provide a detailed PDD spec essentially back to them before making determination on the zoning change. This is a little unusual. And as I expressed in the email to all of you, and I make public now and I also had conversations with the developer, going through the PDD process would require the developer and us to go through a very detailed examination of the plan, which seems to me as a little cart before the horse because then everybody's going through the process, essentially that we just went through for La Madre, without any guarantee that the village board will change the zone to PDD. So rather than do that, I had a conversation with Greg and with Jamie briefly last week, and I think Greg was there as well. The option, instead of doing a full plan like that, to have the planning board tonight, and if we need other time, basically provide to the village board and for our own reference, criteria that we believe are appropriate for developing this parcel more generally. But specifically with some of the Phillips Street projects proposals in mind. We are not essentially providing criteria for the proposal, but slightly more broadly to give the village board the information they need to make a determination on changing the zone. So what could that be? That could be anything from setbacks, the roadways, the shape of the roadways, lighting, drainage, use of the total parcel, et cetera. Now you all did receive a, an updated packet, I believe. We got digital copies of that, Greg, is that what we received?
I think you got everything.
We have everything.
Hard copy.
Yeah, we have both. Okay. And you have it up on the screen. This new proposal is for 70, for example, as opposed to 140 with particular intent, not stipulated for that other portion of the parcel like the original. But the idea here being with this in mind, yet not, we're not specifically setting forth criteria for this project, but we're basically putting forth our ideas of what we believe would be compelling one way or another to the village board for them to do, make a decision. If the village board then approves this change in zone to PDD, we would return here and go through the process that we just went through, very similar to La Vida, including the SEAKER review of everything for that detail. Does that make sense to everybody? I just thought that was an appropriate way to, to go forward. So, and I'm going to lean a little on Terry now that she's back and because she's gone through some of this process before. Some of the things that we as a planning board have talked about before, not, not specific to this project, but the kind of development that we are looking for and we think is appropriate for the village based on both precedent and, you know, what are our senses for the, the community. So with that, I thought I would collect a list, as Mary would be too, so that I can then basically formulate that into something to share with the village board. Any thoughts on any of that?
So, so I would just say anything that might go in that location, we want to definitely think about the character of the village and the character of the surrounding residential properties. Just number one. Because that is basically mostly residential over in that area. So I, I think you want to think about road design. You know, what, what, what are the roads like in the village? Are they curvy, are they straight? Are there blocks? Giving you the answers. You know, is three stories too high? Do we have any three-story buildings over there? And it, you know, that's, that's an example. But I think everybody has to think about, what do you see in the village? What in that PDD would fit in character-wise with our village? I have to admit, I'm, I looked for my other PDD stuff quickly before I, between work and here and didn't find all of my other stuff. But we've done that previously. And I would recommend we look at some of those things because it's impossible to think of all of those things off the top of your head. You know, as we move forward with that. But it's, you have to think about what you want to see, what's the character? How does it affect the properties around it? And it's hard to think out of the box. But if you said, you know, you could have four stories. If you don't decide how many stories you want, you might be surprised at what you get. So you have to sort of think globally about what you want in that property.
Let's start with like an easy.
Long, same line. Consistency in design, consistency in use. Because where we were originally looking at 140 units, now we're looking at 70. So we're only using, you know, basically half the site, which if we make it a PDD, we got to look at all that undeveloped part.
Oh sure, it would apply to all of it, Mike. So, I mean, you'd want the same character everywhere. Are you starting to say, Jamie?
Just, just any, just kind of an easy question. Residential, question mark?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that, I just want to give you, set you on a, kind of on a path, right?
That's what I say, you, you could wind up with something that you wouldn't necessarily see in the middle. Yes, we have commercial properties, we have all that type of thing, but they're zoned for that in those areas.
Well, PDD can be anything, so I know this.
Exactly. That's part of the problem.
So we're not constrained by what this developer wants. But then again, what's the point of even going through this exercise if it's not something that might ultimately be somewhat acceptable to this developer?
Right.
So they're proposing residential. And the question is, is this the type of residential? Which is apartment, I believe, is what they're, they're looking at. So I think that's a, that's a threshold question, right? Are apartments appropriate for this area in this board's estimation?
Well, I think in the first question of residential, I think it's most appropriate to be residential. And there are mixed, we have a lot, you know, the village has a history of mixed use. But I think based on the current configuration of that area, the roads and traffic, that anything other than residential would generate more capacity on the roads than is currently set up for. It doesn't necessarily mean that it can't, in my mind, handle the residential traffic. I just think it, if it was similar to something that had a first-floor retail and then two stories of, you know, that changes the dynamic considerably. I'm sorry, we, we can't entertain your question right now.
At what point?
A while, like, we might have a hearing on this, but that's up to you. But there's a, a big discussion right now.
So that, that's the question, you know, the residential, that it would be a residential PDD and not commercial PDD to get to that specific point. Whether it should be apartments or single-family home.
Well, this is the question.
Right.
That's a question. That's what this, that's what the town board wants to know.
I think that, to my mind, the village does have a nice diversity with apartments of different kinds. That I wouldn't automatically rule out apartments. Density then becomes the sub-question of that. But I, I would think. Density then becomes the sub-question of that, but I would think that the village supports apartments as it does single-family homes, as it does perhaps patio homes or other residential styles within the design parameters that we set for.
So John, I guess just, because I'm new at all this, when we say, do you mean a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom unit?
From an apartment standpoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily, you know, get to that level because now you're getting into the economics of feasibility of a project. But the village today has one, two, three-bedroom apartments, single-family homes that are rentals, things along those lines. But you know, is it appropriate, and that's a good map, good overhead to bring up because it shows the current development, it's that flower.
Candlewood.
Yeah.
Candlewood.
Design, which is interesting because if you never drive back there, you don't know it looks like that. But when you do drive back there, it's, you don't feel like.
We don't want to repeat it.
You don't feel like you're in the village. Quite a few people live over there. We have other residential apartments scattered throughout, we have, there's, you know, so and to my mind, apartments would be included as a potential because, and frankly, the other option would be, say, if it's not single-family homes, it's multifamily homes, which is, you know, is it economically feasible? I don't know.
So is that a question we can come to a consensus on, that apartments would be suitable? Because this is just a beginning discussion, we literally could be here for hours and hours.
It would be my recommendation that yes, they are suitable.
Yeah, I mean, I agree too and I think that, you know, just looking at this picture, when I look at the layout of the streets, you know, there's clearly a grid pattern. I live in Braumtrack, you know, it would mirror that concept, so I think that would be what I would think about in the development of that parcel, was that it would fit in better if it had a grid system and be closer to what the village roadways look like now. You know, and the other thing in looking at the code for the PDDs, you know, currently within that, it says that there can be no more than 30% cover of the project area. So now, when we first had this sent to us, it was looked at as two phases. So I think we have to think about it like from a long-term standpoint of if it was to become two phases and 30% coverage is something that we have to think about, if they're just looking to do some kind of element in the bottom half now, we would probably only want 30% of that covered because they could potentially move to the top parcel and they'd still only be able to cover 30%, whereas all the coverage now that's proposed, and obviously this is this specific proposal, but we would want to make sure that we're thinking about the entire parcel of 15 acres and the 30% coverage, you know, and then have those grid roadways in there. And then how do the apartments fit into the parcel from there?
Greg, can you guess what the percentage of coverage is here? Just give somebody else an idea.
Within the PDD?
Yes.
I'd say it's probably just under 50%.
Well, it would be the whole parcel.
Well, but.
Yeah, but I was just trying to point out so people know what 30% coverage looks like, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, the sort of PDD zone, south of that PDD zone, I'm gonna say it's probably somewhere between 30 and 50, 30 and 40%.
South of it, so outside.
Is that just a building?
So Onida Street, is that?
No, that's a total asphalt also, asphalt and impervious pavement.
If you're looking at. I think our code talks about buildings when it talks about lot coverage, not pavement.
It doesn't really say that. Talks about buildings and pools, accessory structures.
And it's 30%. Can I just jump back one second?
Sure.
Just to be clear, what you're saying, are you talking about?
Impervious area.
No, Onida Street or the proposed PDD area?
Oh, the proposed PDD area.
Okay, so what we're seeing here in this layout is 30 to 50% counting, counting the pavement?
Yes.
Thanks. Well, I just wanted everybody to understand what that looks like.
And what's the.
3% of the entire lot.
And what's the density of the Onida Street?
Oh, sorry, what'd you say?
The, no, sorry. The density of Onida Street or a typical street in the village?
I'm not sure what you.
The density on those lots?
It varies a lot.
What do you mean the density?
Right. A typical older home in the village takes up what percentage of its lot?
Oh, I mean, the code is 25%, but I, I mean, all the lots are different sizes, I mean.
Right.
If you look at just what's on that screen and ignore the, what is it, candlewood there?
Yeah.
You're probably somewhere in the same range as this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of extra backyard there. For the, there are certain areas of buildings are much more dense, but if you're looking at, if you're looking at the character of that neighborhood, it's probably a similar density.
So.
Thanks. I just want everybody to know what that.
Is 30%, 30% coverage appropriate?
I think it's consistent. I think the minimum of 30% would be appropriate, in my opinion.
Minimum?
No, less than 30%.
Okay. So maximum of 30% coverage.
Well, and there's still some clarity that I think Greg is looking for in his home, whether it's actual buildings or impervious materials as well.
I mean, it says, in the code, it says all structures, including accessory structures. So it doesn't really clarify, does that mean parking lots?
Right, that's what I was trying to say. Like paved areas, which quite normally should be.
And that's one thing that goes with apartments is.
Terry was asking was.
The percentage of pavement is way up.
Wasn't even looking at the code.
No, that's fine, I'm just making sure that we're on the same page, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, and the density can be bad either way. Too low and then you have candlewood, right, because the density of that, it's a strange spread-out thing.
That's 100 units.
Yeah, and too high and you're now into an urban look, right? So you want it to match reasonably the density of the neighboring community, whatever that turns out to be, whether it's 30 or 40, you know, if we say the surrounding community is 40% or 35, then the PDD should be 35. In my opinion, I should add.
So another, right now we have apartments with a grid pattern for village roadways, 35% lot coverage.
Ball height.
Let's talk about height.
Yeah, I would say no more than two stories.
More than two, right? I mean.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, just consistently, other than.
Does two accommodate like walkout?
Two accommodate walkout.
So you're saying, could it be two in the front, three in the back?
Right.
There are some codes that specify that certain portions of buildings, certain amount of building could be a walkout, it can vary.
I mean, does this have a topography that was.
That would be a decent number of units.
For some units, like this one here does.
Significantly, yeah, you have to cluster the more tight ones.
Or have more buildings, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And this is a tree story. These all are, except for the end unit, right?
Yeah.
I'm just telling you. One, two, three, two.
One of the reasons you probably don't see it clustered too tightly is the topography of sites pretty, it's a good pitch.
Some of the lines are close together.
Going right to. Yeah. Some have grown really close.
So no greater than two stories. What about the setbacks from the property lines, what appear to be rear property lines of the Onida Street people in particular? They're showing 40.
Forty, yeah.
Is that a?
So, you know, I have an opinion on setbacks, it's probably different than some of y'all, because most of the village does not currently conform to our code as stated today, right? The setbacks are largely what I would describe as a suburban setback, that if you wanted something like Onida Street, which is probably on the other extreme, I know Terry, you're gonna disagree with me, but like on Onida Street, as you're getting close to Oswego Street, some of those houses are like.
Eight feet maybe?
Eight feet setback, right?
In the rear?
This neighborhood over here.
Front.
Front is.
Well, some of those are tighter in the rear too, but.
Right.
Whether we're talking rear or front setback.
He's talking the front.
Some of these older homes were built, you know, long before garages, vehicles.
Horse and buggy did.
You could have had a horse on these properties, I mean, you can reach out and touch the, you know, neighbor some of these properties.
Yeah, and I'm talking mostly the frontage that, you know, what's appropriate and, you know, there's other streets that there is quite a, what I would call a majestic setback that, you know, and then there's sort of, most of the modern stuff, which is suburban-ish, like around Castor Bridge, has a suburban setback feel.
That's the newer, yeah, the newer code.
Right. The other piece is sidewalks that most of the village, particularly today, has sidewalks.
Do you want to put that in?
Yeah, for myself, we were talking about the project of Tappan that was being proposed, some of these same issues came up, but that was, you know, the sidewalks and essentially the village feel. There was a question about setback there, we haven't discussed that in a while.
And also, it's a question of safety, children.
Yes.
No, we definitely want sidewalks.
I think 40 feet, people felt happy about the 40-foot setback. Am I right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm likely to disagree with everybody and say, I don't like 40 feet because it doesn't have a village feel.
You want it, well, if you look.
And I'm talking from the street, not necessarily from the.
Okay.
From the property.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Right, so in this design.
Around the exterior property.
Yeah, the last PDD we looked at was a 50-foot setback between the rear property lines and structure.
Yeah, and to me that, because most of, again, most of the villages exists today, between the structure and the rear of the property is most of the setback, right? It's like 70 feet, 100 feet, depending where you are, which gives maximum distance between properties that way.
So if it was 50 feet, that would be for the building setback, would you also want to say something about the parking lots, like you didn't suddenly like flip it and put the parking lot that many feet?
Yeah, that's one of my biggest concerns is the parking lots. Because if you're gonna put it on a grid, then you've got the parking lots, what, behind the buildings.
That's where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On a grid.
Does that mean that the setbacks within the parcel, between, in this case, you have seven buildings?
Six.
Six?
Six.
Is the spacing between those buildings stipulated by, you know, subject to the same setback, like?
No, this would be something you would need to decide.
Right.
But if we're, so just going back to, because it brought us around a little, setback 50 feet from the property boundary, from the rear property boundary of the Onida Street. Residential. Does that sound appropriate?
To me, it does.
Wait, it doesn't matter. We're gonna call it, we're gonna call it 50 feet from the Onida Street backyard.
Yeah, and usually it's 40.
Would we want to say that you could not put a parking lot in that 50-foot setback?
Eight foot.
It would have to be building.
Yeah.
Adjacent to the setback, so in other words, parking lots internal to everything?
Yeah.
More concerned about that little dotted line across there. Is the other piece we're looking at PDD?
Higher property.
So we're saying parking lots are internal.
15 acres.
Only if it was sold in parcel.
Currently, it's one parcel.
Is this one parcel currently?
So would there have to be, because that's one of the other things in the code, is to be a PDD to be considered, it has to be above 10 acres for the property, so would that have to be a requirement? Was that it couldn't be split in half and then developed separately?
Not necessarily. The entire area of the PDD has to be 10 or more acres.
So this is five, so the PDD involves the whole site.
Right.
Yes.
It has to involve the whole site.
And if it was parceled at half.
I don't want to see a block into what problem we'll get on.
We don't have anything we're really looking at for the top piece.
Say what?
We don't have anything we're looking at for that upper piece.
Then it doesn't get, it gets the PDD treatment, subject to this only. So if we set the number of apartments at X, either they're gonna put it on all or they're gonna put it this way and hope someday some other board does something with the back piece or something, but right now, the PDD is gonna be the whole thing. It has to be, because a 10 acres is.
If that was, that line on this current map was a property line, the parcel below would not qualify for PDD.
Right.
Right. That's, it has to be the whole thing?
Right, yeah, because that's 15.
So the PDD applies to the whole piece?
Yes. So, and the 50-foot setback is the rear and it can't, Penn just died, can't be occupied by pavement.
By what?
Pavement. There was no parking. It's as it's designed.
The setback is the building and pavement, applies to buildings, the setback applies to buildings and pavement, is what I think you're trying to say.
Yes, correct.
So I'm hearing two things, I'm hearing the setback applies to buildings and pavement.
Right, exactly.
And there's a desire to have internal parking, like it's shown in the plan here, which is not up against the setback.
Yeah, because this, this plan is that, almost.
When you talk pavement, you have like potentially a paper street where, you know, there's pavement, so that's.
You're talking parking lot.
Okay, so I would just use the word parking lot over pavement because someone sees that and says, hey, you have a former paper street?
Does that setback also apply to Phillips Street?
Yes.
Like if this got moved over a little, you know? But again, the PDD has the final, this is just to get the board, the town board thinking about what would be appropriate.
And one of the things, I think, Terry, you mentioned streets being straight, which was something that is echoed in the county's recommendation and we've seen before, it's something that we have talked about. There have been relatively new developments in the village that are curved and we're basically saying, we don't want that.
We don't like that.
We don't like that.
Do we want a number of buildings and a maximum square footage?
Maximum square footage per building?
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna get like a 28-unit building or something?
You want to get a big, long.
Like you don't want TC, you don't want TC3.
You want a T here and nothing over here.
It's a tough call because I.
I mean, I don't know what these are, what do you think they are?
Well, these are, these say 14 units, but they're three stories.
I think the density of those, and the size of those buildings would just match the density of the neighborhood.
I had to guess how wide these are.
Because I've seen a lot of neighborhoods, not necessarily here, that are townhouses that take up the whole street.
What's the size of the buildings that you have right now?
Roughly forty feet wide by eight.
Because I've seen townhouses that take up a whole block that are completely within the design, you know, parameters, things like this. That if that was twice as long, I'd still be okay with it because it, it looks...
But we don't really have that here.
Not quite like that, no.
One sixty?
Sixty.
Some of them are torn down.
Sixty by one forty-five.
Sixty by one forty-five maximum building size.
You're doing math.
You're talking one forty-five. You're talking all sorts of things. This is highly residential.
It's a good size, though.
So, so if, if we're talking about sixty by one forty-five maximum building size, maximum of seven buildings? One hundred?
Well, I think the, the number of buildings is subject to the density.
Thirty percent or whatever we...
Right, whatever that density...
Okay, any number is...
It's in the layout of the woods, too.
Building size is subject to the density?
Yeah, that's a, with the height restriction...
That's what I'm saying.
...for us to get to number of units that we need to, to have it economically feasible. If you're doing a two-story height restriction, then we will potentially have to develop fewer buildings, but bigger buildings to accommodate that. The reason we went to three stories is because we had been given previous guidance from the town to try and do a townhome type feel. I'm not saying that that's what you want or need, I'm just saying over the genesis of that. So I just want to make sure that if, if the stories are being reduced, then the building footprints would need to be increased to accommodate the scale we need.
I think it's possible to be too prescriptive in that, in the size of individual buildings and things like that, and just doing it based on the density. That if the buildings, if there are ten buildings and they're situated and laid out a certain way, that accommodates thirty-five, forty, whatever the percentage is, parking lots behind them or between them, that it has an appropriate and still, I mean, village feel. Without stipulating a specific, you know, maximum square footage of the footprint.
Did we, I may have lost it, did we decide we're gonna do two-story with a walkout on a certain slope?
Yeah, we didn't determine that.
And we talked about, I heard we talked a moment about it, but...
How to put that in words.
Maybe we don't want to do it, I don't know, I just...
I don't, I'm just trying to figure out how to put it in words.
Yeah.
Because, and I consider that...
Well, that's again, pretty perspective. You can't, you can't have a walkout, or you can have a walkout, or...
Or we could say, if, if it's appropriate for walkout, you can have walkout.
Right.
If the land is appropriate.
The topography...
Doesn't change the height.
Topography allows.
Determines.
Yeah, but the topography determines if that's feasible.
Right, because it is...
I mean, not that they can't move dirt around, because you can, but...
But the, but the intent being that from the front, it's two stories.
What's the definition of front?
Sort of.
You gotta get, you gotta get a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Definition of front, with the topography of the site, there's only two buildings that could be three stories on one side, and one would have to be the front.
Right, so this is the street, and we have the building here, and we have two stories on this side, but on this side in particular, over here where the grades are much deeper, you have a walkout there, then you're looking at three stories from this side.
I don't know.
You gotta be careful.
You may wanna, you know, because a lot of grading that can happen on a site, you wanna, may wanna look at preservation of those buffer zones. I mean, it's one thing to have fifty feet, it's one thing to have fifty feet with a few trees left in it.
Yeah, and I just have, from a perspective, just living in the area, driving the village, you have two and three-story structures around. So I guess what's the apprehension of three stories in certain areas of stuff? With the grades, it blends in, and I only use this, you have, you know, a three-story apartment building in Aspen just up the road where it blends in with the hillside, two stories on one side, three stories on the other side, we can take you to other things. These aren't like the Morgan stuff over on Downer Street where the big massive buildings at three or four stories tall. You know, when we did the Shuga Project, Gold Legacy, three stories, they, they blend in with the community that's around. So, you know, I like height over floors because that really gets into the peaked roofs, adding character to the buildings, because you start doing floors away some of it. Into, I'll use a section of fifty-seven where you got old two-story apartment buildings that are ugly, you know? So I like to allow the art...
Those would never be ugly.
What? So just those, the, the character of, you know, what the architects can do with these buildings, they can change the stuff. This is just the, you know, the first blush, you know, we want to spend time with you going through this stuff, but we just don't want to be too handcuffed where you can't do certain things.
And I, you make a good point, too, that reminds me that we're, we're trying to make a recommendation to the village of, you know, more broadly...
Not just your project.
That...
Is what we were tasked with.
What about no greater than X height with a preference to the two-story appearance?
Subject to the topography of the grade.
Yeah, and they can change the grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would accept that.
Talking about...
So what would the height be? What does the developer want?
Forty-five feet, with a peaked roof, you know? You go to a lot of two-story houses, it's forty-five feet, you know, three stories, same thing.
So you got forty-five.
No greater than forty-five feet to the peaked roof with a preference for the two-story look?
Pitched roof.
Is, again, to get something to the town board that's acceptable. And again, if this, if they do say, okay, you know, go for it, we're gonna change this to a PDD, then there's a lot more that's gonna go into this discussion.
Right.
We'll be here every night.
Yeah, we will, we'll be here a lot, and maybe in between meetings.
So just to, to bring forward the concept of the three-story building or a two-story building and how it elongates it, there's actually an example in their site layout plan of the elevations of the buildings. And if you look at Type A, that's a three-story unit and it's taller. But then Type B is three-story in the middle and two-story on the end, which helps break it down. But it is longer. I'm a hummer conger, but...
Well, until the point of...
But, but, I mean, even, even, in my mind, even that's better than this. The, the B is better than the A.
Yeah. Because it's dramatically different look.
And it's, it's the character of, you know, if, if you force a two-story that has a very big footprint, it doesn't look like anything else in the village. Whereas a forty-five-foot narrow-ish front like this looks more like the village.
Yeah, I think the, the wider double-window bay on these makes it look unlike the village character. Whereas the single-doubles down here that are broken down more like townhouses, look more like the village, yeah.
Does the PDD's architecture still go to the Architectural Review Board?
Say that again?
Does the, does the PDD architecture still go to the Architectural Review Board? Or is it part of the PDD?
I think it's...
It's at this board?
It does go to the PDD, but isn't that more about materials and...
Well, I, this is, this is my question. So we've got two buildings that, that appear to be the rear part of the building backing up to these people's properties, right? So we just said there's a fifty-foot setback. What would the look of that be? Do we care?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and who's gonna care about it? This board and Architectural Review?
We are.
Okay. That's, I always get confused, I know it's however many years about what the Architectural Review Board looks at. So...
It doesn't mean they might not see it.
It doesn't say anything in the PDD code about referral to the ARB. So I was looking, looking in the ARB code to see what their review is.
The whole past two PDDs I've done with the village, it's been the Planning Board that's done all the architectural viewings. We can bring in front elevation, side elevations, we can bring in perspectives.
Okay.
You don't want the entire Marvin window catalog on there. Arch, fan, pool.
So, so can we talk about, in, in this referral, can we talk about the architecture? That it will, that it's going to be compatible with...
I think the term Terry used was design consistency, or Mike.
Consistency, compatible with the village character. And that the facades facing the back of the Oneida Street properties would have, be given a particular attention to architecture, something like that? I don't know. You know what I'm saying? Somebody help me here.
Can't look like ass.
Put that in legal terms, Terry.
Can't look like the back of the village?
Well, I, I'm just saying.
Should have some thought given to it.
Yes.
Right.
A lot of aesthetics.
Right.
But I think that...
All the way top to bottom, a little border in the middle.
The design consistency, I think of village houses now.
Board, I mean, final.
Is all over.
Well, it's because of the age of the village.
Right, but I mean, I mean, didn't like some that might have decks, right? Like if some, if they had decks and balconies on the back, is that architecturally pleasing? Probably.
Well, this board will decide it, but at least it would be enough for the, for the board to look at. What, what about, go ahead, Terry.
It's okay.
What about, we have a, we have a buffer area. Is there requested to be something in the buffer area? Do you want berms? Do you want trees? Do you want bushes? Do you want...
I don't want berms.
I did, well, the same stuff.
I don't like berms.
When possible, we want, you know, indigenous trees and flora.
Fencing?
Fencing, I'm shooting this site, you guys, you've got to really look at the grade of the site. So you're trying to apply it to this, you've got massive grade change over this, so to put a fence in isn't gonna do anything. So vegetation is better and...
Yeah, I don't want it. I don't really feel like we want a fence that's like...
Yeah.
And it's going down a hill.
Yeah, yeah, a fence.
It's going down a hill toward Oneida Street? That way, or that way?
Yeah, I, I would say we want green.
Yes.
Preservation of vegetation as...
Evergreen and deciduous combination.
And that the buffer, that the fifty-foot well that backs up to the Oneida Street would be, would have trees?
I, I would say should be heavily landscaped.
Heavily landscaped, okay.
And I think you may want to restrict three stories in the back there. You know, because that's, you know, it's one thing to have them internal, but, you know...
Right, that's what I was getting, alluding to before.
And it's kinda like we do with Christopher, so I mean, if you're, you know, you know, you're, you're looking, you're up on a three-story deck looking down at your neighbor's barbecuing.
But to answer the ARB question, to go back two steps, the Planning Board shall make recommendation to the Architectural Review Board, and it says the Architectural Review Board has oversight over any project that requires sec plan review.
Christopher went to the ARB.
They did already, so... So there's... Yes. So this board makes recommendation to the ARB.
We can go through the first Architectural Review and some...
We did for Longstreet.
And they take, you know, their materials there and some of that as well.
What about lighting? We talked about sidewalks.
No, we didn't, we didn't. We did talk about, we did say sidewalks.
I don't think we determined anything, though.
Oh, oh, we got sidewalks.
Well, we did talk about sidewalks.
I thought I heard everyone say, yes, sidewalks, consistent with the village.
Yeah.
I think they're in there.
Because lighting is the other piece.
I think lighting consistent with residential use.
What about parking?
We're talking internal.
It just strikes me that these, you know, buildings with parking in front, I mean, that's not much of a village feel, is it? And I'm not sure how that could be addressed.
Well, we're talking about that it would be behind.
Would be internal to the site, at least.
I'm thinking of the, what are the apartments off John Glenn Boulevard in Liverpool?
Radardere?
Radardere.
Yeah. Aren't they like that, there's parking in the middle? And there might be a pool in there or something. But what you see from the road is...
It's more internal.
The buildings are external, like this.
Yeah. So like, like that, I think...
All right, I'm just thinking of the internal stacks of the...
Yeah, and I think about, in addition, like if, if you were lining up these apartment buildings on a grid, what would that look like?
Right.
And, you know, there's roads and there's parking lots that would be internal where they could be.
Look, you're gonna need parking lots. But internal is better so that you don't use them from the adjacent properties is the only thing I've got there.
All right, people live there, I have to view them, but...
Yeah.
Have to look at my driveway, yeah. I don't like it, but...
Yeah, some of this topography might make it hard to line these buildings up exactly on a grid, but...
If some of these drops here.
And again, we're making a, a recommendation.
Of, of what we would look at when it comes, and then that'd be a final plan. I mean, I think you're doing, I think you, I think we've got something.
Yeah, I mean, another thing to consider is windows.
We, we require them.
The code requires them.
Code requires them, right?
Yes.
Well, I think that's in keeping with the character.
As an example, and I, and please don't take offense, that if you look at building Type E, there's a lot of windows on the front of there, right? So what's on the side or the back? One window?
No, there aren't.
Don't, 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 I'm, I'm just trying to pull everybody in here. So that's, I mean, that's something that's important. What does the back and the side look like, which we will get a chance to look at if this project moves forward or any project for the PDD. But again, it looks great from the front, there's lots of windows, think about the homes here, you know, they have a lot of windows.
Well, I think a lot about...
So one window on the side at the bathroom is not gonna cut it.
Right, because that, all the suburban design is that way.
Yes.
Right, you have a laundry duct and one bathroom window on the end.
Well, we could say windows...
Hexagonal.
And it's ugly.
Windows will be encouraged on architecture in the back and the side, architecture will be important to the PDD.
Yeah.
Mary, you and I will be going through this, don't worry, I'm writing it down, too.
I'm just back to parking. We care more about like ratios, like do you want 1.5 parking spaces, like, you know, 1.5 for one unit? Like, what is that ratio that was the village would like to see in this, you know? Are you staying consistent with your other zoning class orientations? Because that really gets more into, you know, the impervious area of, we don't want to overpark, but we also don't want to underpark. So then, from our side, that's something we would like, you know, specify.
Code requires one parking space per dwelling unit in the...
Unit, is a dwelling unit a three-apartment dwelling unit?
Yeah, one, two, or three-bedroom, and I think that that's way under. Right, I'm just saying, that's the code requirement minimum, is one per unit.
What does the developer think they need?
He mentioned one and a half.
Yeah, that's difficult, what we...
One point five.
Yeah, this is a family project and it would have three-bedroom units, so we were planning for one and a half per unit.
Is there a planned garage, parking at all?
No.
No?
Street parking?
What if, what if it were two? How does that increase this parking that's here?
So it's two?
Thirty-five spots, so, you know?
How many?
Thirty-five.
It's thirty, thirty percent bigger.
So where, like if somebody comes to visit, where are they gonna park and are they gonna... And are they gonna park on Phillips Street? Are they gonna park on Oneida Street?
They park in the fire lane.
They're gonna park in the fire lanes, are you gonna park?
I don't think you can park on the...
Most of the apartment complexes around that you drive into are one and a half to one, so if you have friends or, you know, you know, a lot of people who have two bedrooms are, is one person there, so they want the extra room for something else, you know, so...
And we do have an IDD component, Individuals with Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities, that will be eighteen of the units. Not to say some of those folks do have vehicles, but just taking that into account and balance with the families, those folks are less likely to have vehicles. So, one, that's why we settled at the one and a half, is we thought it would accommodate...
I think if we set a minimum 1.5 in our recommendation, that that is reasonable.
1.5 per unit.
There's projects we've put reserved areas, so if you knew there was the need for more parking, like just if this was planned, was the plan, you could take the stretch of parking on the opposite side of the building, go into Phillips where you could extend with another ten parking spaces. You might not construct them at this time, but if parking was needed, it was planned for, designed for. You know what I'm saying?
There's only one side of it, right?
Just trying to be more green and more, you know, environmentally friendly, we don't like to put stuff out there that's not needed.
Parking in reserve to be considered.
And would, would we want parking on the street?
Will you say, Phillips or Oneida?
No, the interior streets and the development.
No, let's get wider.
Yeah, that'd be the implication.
Twenty-six feet, it's only...
I mean, you may want to do something where we want it wide.
But I'm just saying, if you want on-street parking, the roads are gonna have to get wider.
So the, the other, the other 1.5 is in reserve somehow in the site. And that's gonna work, you know, they're staying. So you build 1.5 minimum, but you have to be able to accommodate two if need be down the road.
So parking is a...
Right, and if, if it meant on-street parking, even one-sided on-street parking, that would be an option.
So they could have parallel, but they have to block the road.
Right, they could have parallel on one side only as part of that extra 1.5 percent.
Okay, no parking on internal streets unless the road is widened, which will be considered.
Up to, like, do you want two-lane plus two parallel parking max, or is that...
I don't even really like street parking, but I'm just trying to...
I'm just saying, like, what I'm saying, like, to the maximum of what is essentially three-lane?
Yeah.
Whatever that width is.
Understand, what I'm seeing is, I'm just trying to help everybody think about what all the options are.
If we're going to a, to a recommendation, the wording of no parking on internal streets unless the road is widened, which will then be considered.
That's fine.
That's...
With engineering input.
Yes, no, I think that's fine.
By my calendar, that's over a dozen things.
Oh, at least, I, I have every one of them written.
I think it's a good start, and I think, and I think everybody should like, think about it, do a little research.
And I, I think in the, what we ultimately send to the village board, that this list, we could easily say this plan is, for example, fits X percent of these...
Most, most of the criteria, sure. A lot of it.
Do you wanna say that?
I don't know, I'm just saying, like, someone's gonna...
Well, I mean, it gives them a guideline as to how we arrived at what we did, but...
They would need the math.
I'm gonna think about that.
They would, you know, like, if they saw this, they would think...
Right, 'cause what we have doesn't support what we've done, so I don't think I'd do that. And it wasn't also supposed to be for this development.
No, that's right.
If this moves to the village board, then do they have the opportunity to give feedback and thoughts? Or is it just they're gonna say yes or no, and it's gonna be it?
The goal...
We don't like it, figure something else out?
No.
No, no. They'll decide that they're going to do the PDD or not.
It's then up to us, if they do say, if they do approve a PDD, for us to go then through that process.
Right, to go through, go through the whole process.
Right, but I, I think what would come up with, is...
Try to drive, maybe.
Nice.
I was like, try and drive.
So, so John, I would recommend that Mary will drive the minutes, and she, I'll compare them against the notes I took. We'll circulate a list that'll be voted on at, at the next meeting, and/or added or subtracted, or changed in any way. No, like, don't, we don't care. You know, I'm saying, I don't care if you don't like the words I use. Right, right, it'll be done when you, when this board says it's...
And I'm happy to, you know, word smith any of that, whatever you need. The only caveat is, I will be out of town on work in October, we'll not...
Yeah, what's the date of that meeting?
The twenty-fourth or something. It's during our, thank... It's during the week of our meeting.
Let me see.
Twenty-five. Twenty-fifth.
Did you steal my rubber band?
I don't wanna steal your rubber band.
I don't really care, not really attached to rubber bands.
No pun intended. Are you gonna be here next time?
Yes.
You wanna...
I will be back, but I will be gone, Mary, from the eighteenth to the twenty-fourth. So we got it.
So the, the next step is, you're gonna circulate that. Today is Tuesday.
In a week.
So, by this time next week, we will all review it. We can modify, add things to it mostly, I think. If there's anything you object to, make that clear in the correspondence.
And, and should be responding like just to you and Greg?
Yes, respond to me.
Instead of the whole board?
And Mary.
You and Mary.
Okay, right, otherwise it constitutes, right?
Violates the public meeting law.
Right, and we'll talk about it at the public meeting, obviously.
Is it, is it possible to also send out to everyone the PDD, like for Lock Street? And some of the others, just as examples for people that haven't done it?
Sure.
I think that makes sense. Doesn't, it doesn't mean that it applies, but it, it will guide them as to the kind of...
I could send off the site plan and code section, so I mean it's...
I was looking for the PDD information, the script directed...
Problem at, that's the issue, I think that it never got put in words.
Oh, perfect.
And this parcel was in a PDD at 1.2, right? It was.
Oh, was it?
I mean, could have something we could say? It was, um, we have maps, we're not sure exactly which one might have been approved.
Really?
Not especially. Well, it was in the, in the county. The county knows that Johnson, yeah. They talked about how it...
Before you were born, Terry.
PDD prior, and they could never agree on what to do there, and they moved it back to R1. We had, it basically sat for twenty years with no developments, and the board said, let's take it back to an R1, so we can start over. So nothing was ever developed there.
I, I, most places you do a PDD, you go, you do initial, in a letter to the board, town board, village board, asking for a PDD, they refer to the planning board. And then you go through the process, you know, and that plan gets locked in as the legislation, so...
It's similar.
And so if we came and switched, so I can go from Willow Street where we did that, to, you know, Topo Valagio, to Lock Street, Dover, we'd better have written words and stuff, sort of the tables on, the site plan gets locked in. We wanna come and change a building, the orientation, we come in for a modification.
'Cause those PDDs were specific to the project and not like they're asking...
They're, they're asking us to do something different.
I know, it's, it's way different than we've seen before. So I'm just saying, that's why if you, like here Lock Street, you won't see, you're gonna see the site plan with architectural elevations, and if we change from that, we gotta come back and visit you guys again.
So maybe we can find, maybe we can find a guideline for PDDs to send out.
Ma'am, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I did. I live on Mechanic Street. Do any of you live in that part of the village? Are all of you village residents?
Yes.
Well, village residents, pretty much. I live in that area.
Okay, not one person that I know in that area wants this. Not one.
On Phillips Street?
Not one person. We are all concerned about the increased traffic, because nothing has been done. You keep building, you keep approving all these apartments, but what, you know, it's just traffic. It's like a clogged toilet.
Right now, it's, it's, what we're doing is making a list of criteria to give to the village board, which has ultimate authority.
Right, and they were gonna vote on whether to change the zoning, and Donna came and said, no, you have to wait for the planning, but I don't hear anybody. I watched the meetings, I've not seen one person mention the fact that this is going to significantly change the whole neighborhood.
Well, that's part of the process that we're going through here.
Yeah, but nobody talks about that.
But we have a public meeting.
Yeah.
Has anybody talked about that?
Our goal ultimately is to make any development, not just this one, it look like the village and be part of the village.
But you're adding significant amounts of traffic.
They'll have to do a traffic study.
Yeah, but they haven't done it yet, and you guys are already, I mean, we can tell you, we live there, that the traffic is bad there, between the school and the warehouse that was built on Sixty Street.
I to- totally understand.
We got people running stop signs.
This process right now, it's a...
It's so early.
It's very early on.
You're talking about moving ahead with this, and we wanna know that...
We're only talking about, because the village board has requests before them for this project.
I know.
And the zoning doesn't match what they wanna do, so the village board has to decide. The village board has said, we need more information on what would it mean to develop this lot as a PDD. Folks like yourself has told us and them about the traffic and other concerns. We're merely at this stage, in this early stage, giving them foundational reasons to either vote for a change to a PDT, or to keep it as an R1. If they vote to change it to a PDT, the project would come back to this planning board, to go through all the things that you're talking about. So it's not, we're not going to...
Include over a traffic study.
Right, yeah, including a traffic study and, and everything else.
I mean, the, the village engineer said that if all the apartment buildings that are, that are waiting to be approved, or in the works, are approved, it's gonna affect the, the water pressure.
Well, I didn't, I didn't necessarily say that. What I did say was...
You said this was a drop in the, this was a small drop in the bucket.
I'm not sure I said drop in the bucket.
One of the things that we went to, I don't know if you were here when we were going through the secret process, which is the environmental quality review, is, is there an impact on sewage and water, and utilities and things like that?
And the neighborhood.
Right, those are all factors that the village board would basically turn over to the planning board if it approves a change. So it's as though none of that consideration, and we haven't looked into it yet, because we haven't gotten to that point legally with the legislative action, right? So regardless of what we do in this recommendation, it's still up to the village board to really just start the process by saying yes or no to the change itself. If they say no, and say, we're not gonna change it to PDT, this particular project, as is put forth, is off the table, it's done, right? What we're doing is, for the long term of that parcel, what we would recommend as the village planners, what is the best outcome for that parcel? And it means, we want these kinds of stipulations, gotta look like the village, it has to have traffic and roads, and it has to look a certain way. So all the things you're talking about are very important to us and to the village board, we just haven't gotten even close to that process yet.
Because from where I'm sitting, it doesn't sound that way.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm trying to explain this process.
I'm just trying to explain.
Yeah, it's a very, it's slow by design. We've had several meetings on it, but even, even this process has been elongated because of the requirement of the village board to act, so...
Excuse me, could you state your name and your address for me also?
My name is Sally, I live on Mechanic Street.
Sally, do you have a last name?
No.
And what's your address on Mechanic Street?
I have an ex-husband that tried to strangle me, I try to keep a lower profile, that's not on the web, thank you.
Okay, with that, I have a motion to adjourn. Second? Done, a little favor?
Second was Donna.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.